Yeah.
Hello. Hi Scott. The mic should be working. Good.
You guys had the same problem, we had to restart last.
Well he'll just log on to the monitor so you don't have to turn that on. Because he can just log on to his computer right into the presentation. Jason, do you want to try it? He's using that VAF.
I just want to make sure that that will be.
Yeah, that's it. And he'll log into that. Okay. Because you still want to be able to see it on screen right here. They'll be able to just play it off. They'll use one monitor, the other. That new system. I don't know if everyone understands, like the downloads and all that.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, I thought she sent it out to everybody. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean it's not perfect.
But they sell it good because I have. They sell it well. They're worth it.
Budget was put together. Oh. This budget was put together with, you know, somewhat maintaining that flat budgeting again, but recognizing our cost increase, as Jason mentioned, insurance and some of those other cost increases and a percentage increase ramps up so quickly based off of our budget.
Yeah, I was just going to point out, you know, the assumption that we're going to lose the LGA of 121,000. I mean, if that doesn't come into play, then that obviously would change this projected amount down to 7.7%. And then, you know, you had mentioned things about like increased funding in the equipment fund. Well, that's obviously something that we could discuss as a council, maybe defer, because I brought this up before. We don't really have a fund balance policy and what's an appropriate level. And something like the equipment fund, you know, I think not only would it be appropriate to have discussion about establishing a balance or a goal that that fund should be at, but also a budget within that fund. So in circumstances like this, you know, we can't just say, well, we're going to, we'd like to put some more money into the equipment fund and that's going to result in an increase in the levy, you know, there should be a clear reason why and then what that money's going to be for. You've also pointed out, you know, our dependence on the general fund has fallen since our policy to reduce our reliance on that fund, which I think is a great step, or at least in the right direction, because that avoids some pretty disastrous scenarios that could come into play if, you know, I won't get into all these, you know, what ifs, but then you can turn to and say, well, what's the appropriate fund balance in the electric fund? How much money are they generating? And they're obviously not transferring out monies to the general fund like they used to, and I believe, you know, I'd have to look back and see, but I, you know, all these numbers getting thrown at you at once is difficult even for me to remember off the top of my head, but just that whole discussion about the enterprise funds, what those balances are, you know, what the, what the net income or increase in fund balance is from year to year, it's essentially like profits, you know, if we're having significant profits in the electric fund now and we're not transferring money over the general fund, we need to be balancing something there. We can't just continue to charge our current rates, which are in turn generating, you know, 900,000 in profits and then turning around and saying, well, we're not going to take those profits to supplement the general fund anymore, so we're going to have to increase taxes. I mean, it's just kind of a double whammy on people to, to, to be doing it that way. And this will all take time, and I understand and appreciate the conservative estimate of saying, you know, this is worst case scenario, it potentially only go down from here, but you know, I think coming out of this, you know, pandemic, and I don't think we're beginning to see the early effects of the economy because of the government intervention with the PPP loans and the extended unemployment benefits and the halt on evictions and all that stuff, you know, that's going to be coming and no one can predict how things are going to react to that, but I think we need to be mindful again, like we were last year, of let's not make that problem worse by creating an additional tax burden to people that are already struggling, personally residential side and business side. So I understand that, you know, this is the initial meeting and now it's going to be even, you know, it will be difficult navigating through this with you not being here. I'm sorry to hear that you're leaving. It's very disappointing to hear, but I'm sure we'll be able to get through it. And the work that you've done and gotten us on this path, I think, will certainly help avoid those major swings and someone else coming in and wanting to do something completely different or, you know, that's what we're looking for is consistency and I think this clearly will make whoever your replacement's job much easier and they'll be appreciative of that. I know we certainly are here, so I guess initially my thoughts are, we should, we should probably try to get that levied amount down as close to zero as we can again, and if we're not,
I think to councilmember Thorson's point, is the, the equipment fund is one of the areas that we talked about. And Jason, maybe you can comment on that. We, we looked at the allocation there for fire equipment into the future, because that's not something that we've done in the past. And the question becomes, you know, whether we can allocate for it within the equipment fund, and when the time comes to be able to pay for it out of our internal funds versus the potentially of doing bonding at that time. But I'll let Jason talk about that.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, so that's one of the items that, that we've been working on, and I'm confident it'll be brought forward. We, we had those conversations with the city manager. We've got a ten-year replacement schedule put together. We've met with the individual departments about their needs and their vehicle replacement and the, the dollars to support the replacement program as they've outlined. So I'm optimistic there's an opportunity with some nominal increases to that equipment fund, that those items, when you talk about the ladder truck or any, any of the fire, the large fire vehicles have been bonded in the past to potentially avoid that scenario. And the councilmember Thorson's comment about cash balances, and that's what's really important in the equipment fund, is it may, you know, three, three million dollars may seem high, but if you lay out a, you know, a vector at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a ladder truck at a million two or a million three, it can be depleted very quickly. So that's one of the things that we've been working on and will be brought forward, I'm confident, through the, the budgeting processes and analysis of those cash balances over the next ten years and the replacement plan to support it.
And it's kind of, you know, we've been kind of working towards that, where we have these fund balances. What are those? Where should they be at? And if we're at those balances now, anything over and above, you know, is it something we can put into the maintenance for street maintenance? You know, it's something that, you know, like Scott, you mentioned the electric fund, you know, some of that money can go to street maintenance. We need, I think, street maintenance is one of our highest capital outlays that we really need to look at in the next few years. So.
That's absolutely correct. And as Jason mentioned, the, the capital, ten-year capital outlay plan identifies all the vehicles specifically by detail and their replacement cycle and their plan. And again, that replacement cycle or plan, just because of the date comes up, that vehicle's not necessarily replaced at time unless it's a need. It's not just based on time or number. But that's what that, that budget or that's what that fund is based off of in, in the increase that was proposed in this current scenario that he's talking about, would help cover the cost or would cover the cost of a, of large equipment purchase such as a fire vehicle in the future instead of bonding.
With your experience, do you know fund balances, you know, what you've been kind of through the last few years here and where we should be at at those fund balances? And you know, what, what do other cities do? Do they do the same thing? They set a, set the balance fund and then whatever's over, over and beyond, beyond that is spent in other parts of the city?
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, it's a good, a good question. And what I guess I'd suggest to the, the cities as they move forward is the, the equipment replacement plan is great for the equipment fund. But again, with, with these utility funds or living, breathing funds, right, the general fund essentially expires and we start over again, and we start over. So every year, it's starting over. And the utility funds, the idea is accumulate resources and assets for a large capital outlay, right? So there's the option to bond and then use those rate increases to pay, pay back the shareholders of those bonds, or, you know, potentially front load, you know, whether it's water towers or road and, and underlying utility reconstruction. What I'd suggest, and we've been, the city manager and I've been speaking with Morgan from WSB about a ten-year plan for replacement of, of surface and underlying utilities, and then trying to sprinkle in those other utility-related things, whether they're sewer lining projects or wellhouse maintenances or lift station maintenance, to get those items identified, right? Because that's gonna be able to say, right, and then run those cash balances out to be able to say, right, do we need to increase rates? Because where are we gonna be eight years from today? So to take those projects at realistic costs and run those out, again, it may, may behoove the city to get a rate analysis from a professional consulting company once those projects and costs are identified, right? Because I think it provides the confidence to go back, right, to utility payers and, community members to say, right, we need a three percent increase this year, and then four percent or zero percent, or we can reduce rates when you have those projects identified.
And just to point out, you know, during, you know, the current situation we find ourselves in, there's record low interest rates, right? And, you know, if interest rates were much higher, I think it'd make our decisions a lot easier. But, you know, sure, if, if we can save, save significant amounts of money by buying a one point five million dollar ladder truck with cash on hand that we have, great. But, you know, if we can stretch that out and not have to deal with that issue of depleting our fund balance because we're paying for it all upfront, and we can bond for it or borrow for it at, you know, record low interest rates. I mean, that's just some of the things that we need to be presented as options, I think, as a council, because, you know, these are all complex issues and, and, and things like, that's just what I look for, our options, you know. And I think we kind of laid that out last year when we made those difficult decisions. It's, well, what does, what does a zero percent levy look like? What does a five percent levy look like? What does, you know, I can't even remember what the original proposed one was, if it was ten percent, I think it was. But at least it gives us kind of an idea of, you know, if what's being proposed is this, and these are the newest spending things like equipment fund, additional, you know, monies to that, that, you know, in theory, we should be doing because it's responsible. But if it's gonna be too painful, you know, that's something we could do without, you know. I think that helps the council in making decisions, so.
Some of the issues that have been with the bonding that we've seen, I think one of the reasons why we've talked about this is, it's not so much the rate. Well, the rate is one thing, but the bond, the issuance fees, that's where we really spend a lot on bond issuances. And what's happened in the past, and one of these in the previous, we've been able to do that as part of a project, other street projects or something like that. So you, you save those issuance fees instead of doing them in multiple bonding. But it's just, it's another option. And also, as councilmember Thorson had mentioned, you know, over the years, this is an area that has taken the backseat on the equipment fund. There's been several budgets over the years where, you know, the, the allocation cost to, to fund the equipment in the department is almost like our internal rental fund. Those have been foregone. But that also has led us in many years past to issuing a equipment certificate because then we didn't have the funds to be able to do it. So there's pros and cons.
It's all a big puzzle, isn't it? Councilmember Cole?
Just had one quick question, Jason. Refresh my memory, the one percent levy on a medium household in North St. Paul equates to what dollars? It wasn't, nine percent sounds like a lot, but if I remember the negotiations from last year, a percent wasn't what would be perceived a ton of money.
Yeah, councilmember Cole, it's a good, good question, and I wish I had a real direct answer for you. So the, the calculation of taxes is rather complex in the seven county metro area due to fiscal disparity sharing. It's a complex topic, and last year's rate dictates future years allocations of, so it's, it's, it's not, it's not merely, you said a, a levy number, and then that's the amount that we collect from our taxpayers because of fiscal disparity in commercial and industrial property taxpayer sharing. But from a high-level standpoint, so this year, if we look at a median residential property paying nine hundred and two dollars, or you add ten percent to that, you know, it's close to a ninety dollar increase annually.
So eight percent?
Mic is off. If, if.
So nine, nine hundred, so if nine hundred dollars, right, so if a ten percent would be ninety of nine hundred.
Right. Oh, eight percent of that would be less than, read about ten bucks.
Well, it.
You're taking ten against nine hundred, so one against nine hundred is.
Oh, correct. Sorry. Yes, back to your original question. I'm sorry. I, I, yes, sorry. You're correct. Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
You've confused me. You did an excellent job.
Confusing me.
He, he's, he's saying a one percent increase is roughly equates to about ten percent increase on a household. But a one percent increase overall, is that roughly, what does that bring in for, is that like around fifty thousand dollars total? Is that kind of the number? It's, it's in that high forties to little fifties? Is that kind of?
Yeah, it's, it's about fifty-five thousand dollars.
Five thousand.
Correct.
Any other questions for Jason? Not, this is the start of it. So can we take a vote to keep you on, or that won't work?
I think that needs to be in the council meeting.
I've been, I've been trying that. Do we have a schedule set up? I mean, we talked about that. It's not gonna be as intense as the last, last year's.
No, the, the schedule is in place, but it's not, not gonna be the intention of what it was previously. And again, with this new process to be able to put information out to the council, Jason can, go ahead.
So we can send this out, then. He's got a proposed budget schedule here of April first, April ninth, April, May, and June, all the way up to December. So we'll send that out.
Yep. I think that was out previously when we adopted that, but we'll, we'll resend that out for everybody's.
Yep.
Information.
All right. Well, thank you, Jason, very much.
Thank you.
Next item that we'll have, and looking for, we'll have Jason's input on this also along with Kyle, I believe he's on, online. But we wanted to talk about the review of our, our HRA, our Housing and Redevelopment Authority that we have currently in-house. And then also in conjunction with that, just to have some conversation about Ramsey County's request for their HRA, that they're proposing and the proposed levy that would take place with their, this is for discussion here at, at the workshop, and also it is on the council agenda. But I please don't feel that there has to be a decision tonight at that point. I mean, to go through this, we do have Commissioner Reinhardt and some other representatives from the county online here at the workshop with us this evening, and would be available at the council meeting also. So it's really to continue those discussions that we had from a previous workshop. And if you're inclined to, to make a decision tonight, fine, but it's not something that we absolutely need to do this evening. The county is looking for an answer as soon as possible as our participation is a move to get things ready by, I believe it's the first of July for their upcoming levies. So with that, maybe Kyle, Kyle put together a lot of this information. Maybe I'd have Kyle come on and go through this memo that was put together, and then we can go through some questions and comments on based of our current in-house levy. Welcome, Kyle.
Uh, can you see me, Mayor and councilmembers?
Yeah, we can see you. You look good.
Thank you. So, yeah, I just put together this memo on kind of the HRA fund in total. And, yeah, just so established in nineteen seventy-one. And along with that, you know, the purpose was for supporting current prospective homeowners through affordable housing projects, including, you know, some redevelopment and redevelop revitalization of blighted properties. And it is a legally separate organization from the city with its own taxing powers. And the governing body is the city with operational management with, with the city management. And some of the goals of the HRA include just foster, promote, effectively communicate the advantages of living in North St. Paul, along with coordinating efforts to preserve existing neighborhoods, eliminating blight, along with retaining and attracting desirable housing that leads to investment and commitment from the community. And then just some quick statistics on the HRA, that the, the levy is set, it's a, by Minnesota statute, a maximum of, I believe it's, here, let me grab it quick, it is point zero one eight five percent maximum levy. And along with that, it's voted on by the city council, and we have been doing it since what we could find in our records was two thousand and six. And as of now, the cash balance in the HRA is thirty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Well, that was as of April thirtieth. We have an AP, I believe, dispersment in this packet that will change that number for me. And then another core piece of the HRA is just the land it owns. And this is land held for resale, and there are sixteen parcels. Cost of the parcels is about one million, seven, seventy-eight thousand dollars. And the assessed value per Ramsey County is one point six million. The difference here would come to just market value increases throughout the years and along with improvements made to the properties. And those sixteen parcels are to be used for future land swaps promoting development and the student-built program. So then, along with that, the other program that was since discontinued was the home loan program that was run through the HRA. And as of April thirtieth, there are seven remaining loans worth eighty-five thousand dollars. And these will be serviced until they mature, and some of them go through, I believe, twenty thirty-eight. And, yeah, these home loans were just, were administered just to give current residents and homeowners just an opportunity for lower interest rate loans to zero, just to help with housing improvements and energy efficiency projects. And then, so the student-built program that, that we have been running since two thousand and eight is a partnership between HRA and Northeast Metro Nine Sixteen Career and Technical Center, along with the St. Paul Cabinet Making Program. And this targets severely distressed and nuisance properties, just to better the housing stock and give students the opportunity to explore career paths in construction and building trades. And along with that, eight homes have been, are, so since two thousand and eight, ten houses have been sold, and two of them are currently in process at two one nine eight Second Street and two four eight seven nineteenth Avenue. And typically, these homes take between three and four years for purchase of the property, designing, demolition, up until construction. And right now, net proceeds from the program are at fifty-two thousand, and they're projected to be a hundred and ten thousand after these next two houses. And if you have any questions on any of the, the materials, just let me know, and I can go over them with you as well, Mayor and Council.
Any questions for Kyle? Good job, Kyle.
Oh, is he done, or was he gonna continue on?
Nope. Nope, continue.
Okay, because I'll have questions at the end, I think, after he gets to some.
Oh, with regards to the levy?
With regards to your presentation, were you done?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yep. So, councilmember Thorson?
Well, I was just gonna ask for some clarification here on what slide. This is on page thirteen of sixty here. And this is talking about the student-built home program. And it says in the note, you know, because we're trying to, there's a question of mine because, you know, I brought this up too. To my knowledge, there's never been an actual budget established and followed in this HRA. And, you know, the current house on nineteenth, there's still no budget. We haven't met as an HRA to discuss that. There wasn't one on the Second Street one, and to my knowledge, again, there has not been. And, you know, my question that I had asked for information was, you know, what are, were the costs and any in-kind type of things? So if there was staff time, you know, put to that, whether it be public works, labor, helping construct the house, or, or what have you, any city employee. And, you know, I'm looking in the notes here, and it states there's no labor cost data available in, in several of these. But then, on one of them, that note goes away. So are these, are these numbers that are? are these, are these numbers that are, that don't have that notation? Those include all labor costs of like city staff time and, you know, like if we had public works employees up there working on the house or a fire department personnel or someone like that, that's the cutoff from that point. That's not included and for everything else underneath it, it is.
So with regards to the labor costs included, those would be the costs coded to the HRA. If, if a public works employee did not code their time, we would never, we wouldn't be able to code that cost. So these, the costs included are the HRA, any costs booked to the HRA related to those projects.
What we've been doing following in recent years is anything that was done with work with the HRA, it was quoted to that HRA fund. And that's what's been included in these costs.
Well, and I know this question has been brought up, you know, going back to last year. I think it was Councilmember Walzak asked for clarification on, because when we approve these HRA bills, there is no notation of public works time or fire firefighter time, you know, paid, you know, there's been a member of the fire department that was up there working for quite some time on the Second Avenue one. So that's my question is, is that included in these figures or is that not included? Because, you know, we've never approved that in any budget or, you know, HRA expense. It's not detailed in there because I don't know how that individual gets paid or if there's a, if, if something gets trued up at the year end or quarterly, when we reallocate money out of the fire department fund where he was paid, I would assume to have the HRA reimburse that fund because that's my concern is that if we're, if we're not staying consistent and, you know, we're being told like in this case, well, this house on Second Avenue, we sold it and we made 56,000, but that doesn't include city personnel time. And that city personnel time is being deducted away from general fund. And then we're told, you know, like, well, we need to raise the levy 9.9% because we need to take up, you know, make up for this kind of stuff. That's my concern. If we haven't been doing in the past, at what point are we doing it now? And are we confident that these numbers are accurate and reflective of that? And maybe we can't answer that because we just don't have that information, but it'd be nice to verify that tonight. We do in fact include it or not.
Kyle, these, these funds were, were these including the payroll costs that were through HRA with the one individual that was working at the, at the site?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It seems like we should almost have an HRA meeting here pretty soon.
Absolutely. And, and I kind of want to do an update on the budget as we're talking about for the house on 19th Avenue. The school is, is working on reviewing that plan. The intention is, at least my intention is, is that the school takes that and does it in its entirety. So they developed, they've taken the plan that we put together last year that went through planning commission and things like that. Based on this economy, based on this market, based on material cost, all of that. They're relooking at the whole, the whole plan of the house, the lot size, everything else to see what can be done in a cost effective manner. They will put together a complete budget, a complete construction timeline, cost, all of that. And my, my goal would be to turn that whole thing back to them as that they're, they're running it. They're, they're doing the cost implementation. You as a council, you would approve that whole package and would all be operated through the school.
And they're able to come up with a budget to know, you know?
Yes, yes. And this year or the fall coming up, just because of their enrollment, their enrollment is very high. They're also talking about adding a, an additional instructor to help to lead instructor, which, you know, in the past years, we've provided someone from the city to help out. And even prior to that, in some of these costs in here, there were years where we had to literally pay the cost of the instructor from 916 because their program was very short students and that was the only way to maintain it. So the city had agreed to pay some of those costs to maintain the instructor. So now we've come full circle back with that where the college is picking up the full cost of the instructor and is also looking at adding an assistant instructor to it, which would also eliminate our need for providing someone like we did from staff. I think the other, the other question that has to be considered, and this will tie in with the comments, with the consideration with Ramsey County's levy is to really hone in and talk about our HRA program. I mean, for, for these past 10, 11 years, what the HRA has really been is though we've done some of these low interest loans, we've done a few of those over the years. But otherwise primarily it's been a student build housing program. And is that something that, you know, with the affordability and things that we do and the cost of these homes, that's what we're running up to these. When we reconstruct these homes and we're doing this in a, in a neighborhood, we're really bringing that whole entire neighborhood value or taking out a blighted property as our finance director had talked about. And that's had a big impact on neighbors, improving things and doing things with their, with their properties around. But it's been very well received in those types of areas. But the question becomes, is that what we want the program to do? Do we want to change this program in the future and, and do something with low income loans or other affordability items? What was the, what's the council's direction? And also how does that partnership with or without the county's levy that's being proposed?
As you say, I think that's, we need to compare, what are we doing with our HRA? That's comparable to what Ramsey County is looking for us to add on to theirs.
Correct.
If we're doing both, why do both?
Correct.
So I guess that's my question to the council. If we have our own HRA and we're, and we're meeting those needs that the HRA, Ramsey County is, is asking us for us to do. Why, why do both? So.
So then we have county representatives on the call here with us this evening. They're certainly willing to answer any questions or give any background of their program. I know Councilmember Long had, had sent out some information that we tried to answer some information with that. And so sent that back out to council. So maybe if there's any questions stemming from that or whatever the direction is, but we, we've got the representatives that we can continue that conversation. We've got a lot of, gotta be, pay attention to our time. We've got a lot of other topics to get through.
So they got to be done by 6:20, 5, 6:20.
Just to, just to pay attention to that.
Any questions? Do we have Victoria or, we do? Does anybody have any questions for the commissioner? Victoria is on, on the call here and I know they're, go ahead, Victoria.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were asking me if I was on the call. Yes. Well, you know, really what we're doing here is listening. We were interested also in the update that you provided on your HRA levy and that how we can participate or leverage and what you do, you know, with your levy. I know the city of St. Paul is looking at, at changing what they're going to levy for the HRA. How that fits together. And I think the, the questions that were asked were really important ones. One thing I guess that I would like to say about this is the timing of this, I know has been questioned. And the, with the ARP funds that have come in, we feel like that can help us during 2021 and 2022. And the HRA levy would not be available until 2023. And at that point it has much more flexibility as well. The need is great as we all know. And so it's something that we really want to try to help, especially in the area of naturally occurring affordable housing. And I guess I would end with the fact that when people have asked me about this, I, for cities anyhow, I compare it to the Environmental Response Fund. If you have something that you want to do, and I mean the city wants to do, and they need additional funds for environmental cleanup for that purpose, then you apply to us and we are able to provide that because of the deed tax that was enacted quite some time ago. This would be the same. So there are no mandates on, on what we expect that you're going to do in your community as far as mixed income or affordable housing. But rather being there to assist when you have programs. So that, you know, if you wanted to change what you're doing with the student build, which Ramsey County have, I've had a lot of conversations about trying to help in any way we can on that. But if you want to change that, expand it, if you want to do, you know, some other things as far as the naturally occurring affordable housing, which is what I think you were talking about, we want to be able to help. And, but it's, it's up to you to decide what you want to do. And, you know, right now we don't have any, if you come to us and ask us for help or want to leverage those funds to do more in your community, we don't have any because we're the only county that doesn't levy for the HRA. So I maybe asked or brought up more questions than I answered, but I wanted to just give you an overview of what it is we're trying to do. And there's no we, we want to be able to help, but we need to have a levy in order, we need the funds to do it, just as you do for the city. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them. I have Josh Olson on the call and so is Commissioner Madus Castillo.
Thank you, Victoria. Any questions for Victoria?
Victoria, I just have one to add. You, you mentioned, you know, projects in North St. Paul. If we have something going on, maybe expand upon that a little bit as it, but is this specific to just affordable housing? I think that's some of the question that, that I've heard out there about what potentially could these funds be used for?
And I think what I'm going to do instead of trying to answer that, because I know that there are some things that are complimentary to affordable housing that it can be used for. But if Josh, if you would allow Josh to answer kind of what that breadth of, of opportunity is, I, I would be more comfortable with that. If that's okay.
Okay.
Josh?
Hi all. Josh Olson, I'm the Deputy Director within the county's Community and Economic Development Department. I, I, I think the, the, the true and factual answer to that is the HRA levy is a much more flexible, available pot of money in the past. And what we've been supportive of projects in North St. Paul and Maplewood and in suburban Ramsey County is we rely heavily on federal entitlement funds through our CDBG and home programs. And then our, that's, those are the three, I'll say the three posts of our programming. We've added in over the last two years, additional programming. We added in response to what communities were asking for. And that was a corridor revitalization program, which was flexible, really the, the, the most flexible planning dollars that we could provide. Even more flexible than Met Council's livable communities, really kind of early, early stage planning dollars. So, you know, to answer the question, no, it won't be entirely to affordable housing. We will be providing a, a full suite. Even underneath the umbrella of affordable housing, you know, there's affordabilities at multiple levels. 30% is obviously a, a primary need within our Ramsey County community. But this is, you know, 30 to 60, 80 are going to be targeted areas of focus too. And that's partially because of, that's historically where our home and CDBG allocations have been at. So we, we aren't stopping those programs. We're just amplifying through the HRA's levy, these additional dollars to make it more flexible. Eligibility is easier. And that is everything from single family rehab and energy efficiency programs to the apartment. And, you know, NOAA projects that we, we do our best to keep affordable moving, moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. And then time wise here, we got to move on, I think, unless there's any questions for Josh or Victoria. Any questions for Scott? Not, let's go ahead and move on.
Excuse me. Turn that over to our Finance Director, Jason Zerone, to discuss the American Rescue Plan.
Thank you, Scott. So this is a kind of a follow-up from April 6th, I think is when we initially had discussed what was going on with, with the American Rescue Plan Act or the fiscal recovery funds, depends on who you talk to, how it's phrased. But so th- this is an update to that. So I think this was back, March 11th is when Joe Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act. And, and a portion of that that we've talked about is $350 billion that'll be allocated to, to state and local governments. And, and so in that we had, in that conversation, the preliminary distribution is about $1.5 million to the city of North St. Paul. At this point, we don't have any clarity about what the actual number is going to be. The League of Minnesota Cities has been communicating with, with cities about the timeline of releasing money and, and when those dollars will be identified. So it sounds like either at the end of this week or early next week, the actual dollar amount will be identified. So if you remember when we talked back earlier in the year, the, the plan was is that not entitlement city. So essentially cities less than 50,000 in population. The, the state was responsible for the initial funds to be deposited from the federal government and then they would distribute out to individual cities. That is still the plan. What we were told is that once the, the dollars were deposited with the state of Minnesota, within 30 days, they release it to, to the local municipalities, which targeted June 9th is approximate, is the approximate date. It sounds like that's not going to be the date. It sounds like it's going to be delayed. And then the Office of Management and Budgeting is going to ask for a 30-day extension. So it sounds like this is going to be sometime in mid-July when the initial allocation is going to be deposited. And again, it's only going to be half the amount. And then one year from the date of the initial deposit, the second half will, will come into the city's account. Dollars essentially have to be earmarked for spending by December 31, 2024. That's still the date. But in the initial guidance that's been released by the Treasury Department, it sounds like states will actually have until 2026 to incur the expenses. So if the city was delayed, because it sounds like there's a large potential for infrastructure projects related to these dollars. They're trying to be understanding that if there's a lot of contractors tied up and projects delayed and they're going to give X, extra time to spend the dollars. So with that as well, I included the initial, again, it's initial guidance from the Treasury Department. So it doesn't identify exactly how, or clarify everything in the bill, but it's initial guidance. So if you look in your, your packet, I think page 24 is that I've got, got, or 22, excuse me. This two-page flyer is probably the most helpful initially to identify what's allowed and what's explicitly not allowed. So some of the things that, that we talked about was, you know, public health response, replacement of lost revenue, water and sewer infrastructure, you know, broadband infrastructure, some items like that. And then some of the things that, that are not allowed and then also example uses of the funding, which I think is, is helpful. I want to point out as well, and I'll kind of move quickly through this. So starting on page 24 is the initial FAQ that's been released. There's, when I read through it, there's, there's four items or four numbers that I think is interesting for council to contemplate as decisions are, are made about spending, spending this money. So I'll start on, on number six, and I think that this is important. So if you remember the, the coronavirus relief funding, there was the presumption of public safety dollars all being for fighting coronavirus and responding. That's no longer the case. So before we could say, hey, we have X dollars of public safety payroll, we'll allocate it to the grant money and, and keep the grant money. That presumption is gone. So significant documentation has to happen in order to say, right? We have public safety individuals or public health individuals, right, fighting against COVID to use, to use those dollars. So that's a really significant difference. Another one is number nine. So what type of services are eligible as, as responses? So right, there's assistance that can be out there for food assistance, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, all kinds of different things. So I thought that that's an interesting thing beyond, you know, that, that two pager that kind of identifies water and infrastructure and some of those things. I thought number nine was interesting. Number 10. Recipient, may recipients use funds to respond to public health emergency and its negative impacts. Yes. And it talks about, you know, cash transfers for households that have experienced negative economic impact. So there's some more opportunity there. And then, and then finally, number 15, I think is of interest. The, the interim final rule for impact for COVID for certain populations and geographies. So I think that the, the, the funds are more broad than, you know, coronavirus or fighting against COVID-19. It's, I think it's more broad and it's targeted for whether it's infrastructure or helping underserved individuals in the community. It's a little bit more targeted is in, in those terms. So I, I think the, the big takeaway, at least right now, is that in those terms. So I think the big takeaway, at least right now, is that from my perception is the funds are to be treated a little bit different than the coronavirus relief funding, and they've kind of outlined in the interim ruling that, yeah, it is a little bit of a different flavor, and there's some different opportunities. And again, coronavirus, there's only, I think, an eight-month window to spend those dollars. The window for this is significantly wider. So hopefully they'll promote conversation and discussion about the appropriate use of the funding. So that'll turn it back over to you, the mayor.
So a lot more flexibility, you think, with this, with this money?
Yeah, Mayor, I, yeah, I think that there, the rules are just different. I think that the approaches are different, and I think it opens up opportunities for all kinds of different, different communities, right? Because these rules are for everyone, whether you're outstate, in-state, whether you have your high-income, low-income, irregardless. I think it provides councils and boards opportunities to use the funding in a targeted methodology that best fits their community, but still within some constraints.
Councilor Thorson?
Yeah, just, you know, going along that line, and especially just our initial budget discussion, has that money that was left over from the, I even forget what that was called, but we initially got some money for the COVID response. We allocated roughly $520,000 towards the business, small business grant fund, and then we had an amount left over, was it in like the $400,000 range, because we got just under $1 million. And we have had some expenses, but there, and we took a step to create a coronavirus relief fund, we're allocating that to, but we still have a substantial amount of money left over in that initial fund, and now you're saying we're going to get another 1.5 that is essentially has different guidance, different rules for spending, more time to spend it. Have these amounts of money been factored into that initial budget projection of, you know, a 9.9% levy increase or no?
That's a good question, Councilmember Thorson. So that's one of the explicit nonuses is the use to reduce or delay tax increases. So that's explicitly.
Sure. So the answer to that question is no, nothing. Okay. But so this is where, you know, it gets confusing, because they can say, well, you can't use it to reduce your tax levy, but we just talked about putting additional funds into our equipment fund because of the need, like per se, a fire truck. But if we decide to just buy that fire truck, and these funds can be used for that, and that's perfectly acceptable, then that in turn is allowing us as a city to not have to raise the levy. But I suppose someone could argue, well, you're just doing that to reduce the levy, and you can't do that. And it, so it just kind of seems odd, you know, like, everything we spend in the general fund has an impact on the levy in theory. And if, if we choose to use some of this spending and follow these guidelines, I just hope that that's, you know, we don't lose sight of that too, that, you know, general fund spending is just off limits. And if the unintended consequence of that is that it helps reduce our levy, then I don't see, you know, if, what is there some separate reporting requirements? I don't know. I mean, it's probably too early to tell, but I think that example of the fire truck is probably pretty simple enough for everyone to understand, you know, like, if we're, if our current proposal is to increase equipment fund balance by allocating money out of the general fund for that, and some of this money can help offset that, I don't see why that would be a problem, but I guess we'll have to let that out when we know more information.
Just a moment of clarification. I think it's important you, Councilmember Thorson, brought that up. There is interim finance, financial reporting that's going to be required to the Department of Treasury related to the spending of these dollars. And then also, if you recall, last year, there was a single federal audit. Anytime there's federal dollars in excess of $750,000, local governments are required to have a single federal audit in conjunction with their traditional financial audit. The distinction I'll make here is that, let's say that the city receives $749,000 this year and $749,000 the subsequent year, it's about when the costs are incurred from a matching perspective. So just because of the dates that the dollars are received, if, you know, almost $1.5 million is spent in one year, then that's the federal single audit would occur, because essentially you have to match the revenue with the period with which you have expenditure. So if it goes in excess of that in one year, that's, that's when the requirement kicks in.
Respect the time. We'll keep moving along. Our finance director, Jason, you want to continue along with the investment policy?
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Mayor and council. So this, this is a bit of a house cleaning item, I guess I would phrase. So I'm kind of trying to go back through and remember the purchasing policy, post issuance debt compliance policy. So we, finance has been trying to stay up to date on some of the policies, the revisions that have been required, and to stay up to date on that, and this is just another item in that list. So on page 50 of the packet here is the memo. There's no real, I would say substantive, substantive changes to the policy. It's more cleaning up names, titles, things like that, like the specific references to the statute, the actual language from the statute's been removed, just in case there's any changes to the language, right? We just want to reference the statute and in the, ensuring that we're coordinating our actions in, according to the statute. So it's more of a cleanup, making the policy look consistent with our other policies, designation of the ability to purchase investments as well. So this would provide the finance director the opportunity to assign another individual in their absence to purchase securities in accordance to the statute as well. So like I said, it's a more of a visual change and then just kind of a cleanup. Again, the biggest item is that the city is still operating in accordance to state statutes.
Has that been vetted then through, is that from the league or is that from our city attorney or?
Yeah, so that's a good question, Mayor. So we haven't, this isn't like a template from the League of Minnesota Cities, and no, it has not been run through the attorney. We can do so if the council would like. Again, want to bring it forward in a draft format in case there's particular concerns, just, just like you've outlined, and we can bring those things forward for any feedback they may have, and then workshop it again before we request council approval.
I think it should be vetted.
Yep, absolutely. I have our city attorney review it. And our city attorney is on the line. Shayna is here with us this evening. Sarn was not available this evening, so Shayna is on the call with us this evening also for any comment.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. If there's anything I can assist with, please let me know. As Mr. Zimmerman stated, we have not specifically reviewed this policy, but we certainly could do so as part of the process for approval. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Shayna.
Mayor, the next one, try to get through this, is our financial transparency reporting, and I'll turn that back to our finance director.
Thank you, Scott. Mayor, council. So this is, thank you, Mayor. It's nice to be here. So this last item is more of just informational, and it's also in the council packet, just for acknowledgement of the reports being published. So again, just trying to stay up to date. Again, we talk about kind of a standardized approach and sustainable reporting. So again, the reports that have been out there, again, they're out on Open Gov. It can be linked through the finance website, the transparency portal on there. Again, information about cash and investments, street projects, the TIF projects, budget to actual, the budget, all kinds of financial informations out there. So I won't particularly go through any of the specific items. The budget to actual at this point, good information, I think, for council to potentially peruse, but probably a little early to start making assumptions or trends at this point. And again, we haven't received property tax revenues. So again, revenues are going to be, you know, under that 25% mark that you'd kind of have as a benchmark a quarter of the way through the year, but we've tried to incorporate context with those numbers to help explain the situation as far as each fund and department is concerned.
That's good.
Mayor, if I could, the other subject, just take a couple minutes. Could we, you can see the format difference in the.
I'm trying to get used to it. I'm trying to get used to this format.
Yes. And it's, Carrie, Carrie, are you available on the call? I think she was on the.
Yeah, I'm here.
Carrie, maybe if you could just take a couple of minutes. We're getting close out of time, but this is our civic clerk that we're starting to use. It's not fully functional yet, but Carrie, maybe you want to go through that?
Yeah, so a while back, you know, we moved forward with purchasing this civic clerk tool to help with our meeting management and our packet creation. And this is really the workshop packet and the council packet for tonight are kind of our first go-ahead with staff working in this new platform to make sure all the attachments are, you know, in place, that the information is put together in an easy bookmarkable way. This is really our first phase at this, but you know, if we don't start learning it, you know, we're going to just, it'll delay the project. So there's a couple little kinks you can see in there. It looks like I submitted some finance stuff. That just means I was the last person that touched it. Believe me, I'm not doing any finance, rest assured, Jason. So, so this is kind of the new format we'll have going forward, and it will help us with our bookmarks. It will help us with building the attachments and the agenda packets. But it also really does help us because as staff, we can all work together on these packets and submit our items, and it will allow for better meeting management. As we go further down the path here, there will be an elected official portal. So instead of pulling your information off SharePoint, you'll actually have a council login, and you'll be able to access these packets and edit them and make notes on them to help you be more prepared for the meetings as well. So we're still a little rough. This was our first go at it, but this is what our new format will be. Is there any questions or concerns while we're still in the implementation phase?
Well, the concern is, are we going to be able to understand what's going on as a council?
Yes, I guarantee it.
And everything that's, you know, I had a little hard time looking at it myself, downloading it, because it's different than the Adobe or whatever we're using before. So it is different. And maybe we should have you at the next meeting, just to, once you get all the bugs worked out, maybe some sort of training for us.
Yeah, the packets are still.
iPads, I think the iPads are different too.
Yeah. For the iPad, you need an app to make the bookmarks work. That's kind of a known issue with them. But I'm more than happy to have, you know, maybe a little practice workshop. The packets are still generated as an Adobe PDF, which is why, you know, we really kind of challenge staff to work, get this packet here, so we could kind of get our, our feet wet and learn how it all works together. So you're still going to get the packet as a PDF. How you interact with it might change, and hopefully it will also improve. So it'll be easier for you to navigate through the supporting documents while you're preparing for the meeting, and certainly while you're in the meeting.
Okay.
But I'm available anytime. Just let me know. I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
That's all, that's all I have here.
Okay. I think, anybody have anything else? Jason, thank you very much for all your hard work. And tell you what, I mean, it's, it is different. You know, I think this year's budget cycle is going to be a lot different than last year's. So appreciate all your hard work. You've done a great job.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the recognition, and, you know, I'm confident the group will continue and push forward and continue to utilize the tools and, again, transparency information. And, yeah, just continue to drive forward.
Thank you. All right. If anything else for Jason or Scott? If not, we'll motion to adjourn. Do we have a council member, Thorson? Second by a council member call in the discussion. Not all of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's. Motion carries. We are adjourned. We do have that presentation at.
Get ready for that.